Good afternoon. I call to order the August 18th, 2021, Special Public Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request that everyone here in person at the Ed Center, style your cell phones and your electronic devices. Ms. Bates, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unafraid, nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Could I get a motion to revise the noticed agenda to add hearing of the public that was inadvertently omitted when we changes from a committed a whole meeting to a special public meeting?
Okay. You need a roll call for the...
Okay, great. Then we'll do that. All right. Mr. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Here.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here.
All right, great. Now can I have a motion to revise? Thank you, Ms. Bolton.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Ms. Wagner?
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
That's right.
All right. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. That chat feature will be open for your request for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if there's information that you'd like to have in response to a question. Now, let's get right into our agenda today. Let's get into the ESR 3.0 update. Ms. Wagner?
Well, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I am pleased to present to you the three-year ESR 3 or ARP, American Rescue Plan Act, to be submitted to ODE on August 20th. Having said that, we've done a series of public engagement and so we shared the results of the engagement last week ago, August 9th. And I reformatting the budget to coincide with the feedback from the public so they can see how we've invested in the things that are important to them. So as you recall, the requirement out of this grant alone as opposed to the other two that came before them, that we had to have meaningful consultation with all our stakeholders. We posted on the website, received emails, did a thought exchange with over 4,000 participants, and here's the results. It's all right. So in a spirit of transparency, I'm showing you ESR 2 just for comparative purposes, but we are focusing on ESR 3 alone tonight. So the others 297 million, but the ESR 3 plan is 404, okay? So on the thought exchange, this is the order of importance and the feedback that we received from the 4,000 participants funded us to first address learning loss and mental health services, staffing, summer learning, and after-school programming, technology, facilities, and the professional development. So the first order of priority was the strategic activities addressing the learning loss. Over a three-year period, we're investing close to $60 million. Thirty million of it is an evidence-based curriculum, first-grade reading specialist, nursing, and cleaning supplies, masking, disinfectants, all kinds of social distancing tools and products to keep our buildings clean and even people to help keep them clean. The second priority, we have the smallest investment in, is because mental health, we are heavily invested in other funds, student wellness, IDOB, and kind of four, I believe, with positive school culture. And so while it looks like a small dollar investment, collectively, we are heavily invested in our students. Third on our list was the staffing. So over the last three years, we have $8.2 million budgeted allocated to spend on staffing. Super subs because we anticipate teacher absences during quarantine and COVID. To be increased, we have extra body, 163, I believe, of extra bodies out there to help cover classrooms. We have quite a few safety paraprofessionals, 56, if I'm not mistaken, to help in the schools with operations and maintaining safety and social distancing. And we have over a million dollars in contracted services for supplemental staffing augmentation. Under summer learning and after-school programming. So in the three-year period, we have $15 million for summer learning. You'll recall, this past summer, we spent $15 million alone. But we used ESR 2 money to do it. So ESR 3, you only needed one more year of summer learning and then we'll revert back to something that looks different. We also put in that, I'm sorry, go back. So we also put in that budget to restore the elementary after-school activities that we had cut during COVID when we were trying to reduce our budget. And so this represents the restoration of those elementary sports in that contract. We were able to get some of it back in other ways, but this is the balance. Okay? So under technology resources, 37 million over the next three years. If you recall, we're investing heavily in our infrastructure upgrade, the tech leases to do one-to-one devices, and then we put some money in there for replacement costs on one of the image devices so that we can keep the technology in the hands of our students. So here's a summary based on the categories that our public asked for. And I've showed the ranking of the top three, but it's organized in descending order of how we have planned. So if you recall, the facilities projects, we have a couple, Pleasant Ridge, High Park, and Walnut Hills in there. The Walnut Hills building was in ESR 2, but everything else is in ESR 3. And then so up to 202 million. So we have a little bit of plan for contingency in case something changes. Also, keep in mind that this is the initial plan, that we are allowed to modify as we go. So as our needs change, things change, and we can pivot and adapt to this budget to meet those needs. You have to file in advance with ODE, CCIP, Consolidated Grant Plan. Okay? So the other category that we didn't talk about that didn't really fit into any of the ones that the public came up with was our restoration of our transportation services. And this is over a three-year period, so seven million, eight million a year. The bus monitors that are required by IEPs, the Student Success Center, and some indirect chargebacks that we're allowed to do for all of our state federal grants, cover all of our administrative time and effort in addition to a legal contract to help maintain our compliance and an accounting contract to keep track of this $300 million that's on top of our other day-to-day activities. So that concludes the presentation and the update. The plan is attached to the treasurer's report. And so when we adopt, approve the treasurer's report, we'll adopt that. And we will file it with ODE tomorrow, a day in advance. So would you guys entertain any questions?
Great, thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. Could you repeat again which of the buildings or facilities is in ESR 2 versus ESR 3?
ESR 2 is the Walnut Hills building. ESR 3 is the Walnut Hills expansion, Pleasant Ridge and High Park.
Is that good?
Yes.
Oh, so what year would that be in, in calendar time?
So those three projects, I believe, are already under design. And so 18 months after that, so I believe 18 months, right? So while we'll be spending money throughout the next three years, the schools should open in, or the expansions should open in 24, beginning of 24?
Two years from now?
Yes. August 24.
Two years from now?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question.
Ms. Bates?
And on facilities also, have we followed up with the dean from UC's Design Art Architecture Program regarding long-term plans for collaboration on the design for Hughes Annex and also shorter term for the Fairview Coach House?
I will defer to Mr. Timbal Oliver.
Yes, I was able to meet with Professor Mitchell, and he is interested in helping us with some conceptual-type projects like the Fairview Peers House, not any actual design and architecture work like our building expansion. But we'll be working with him on that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to get the Coach House.
Come on, Melanie.
I'm not told yet.
Any other questions?
I take that along with...
Any other questions? Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, Mr. Messer. I think, I wanted to thank you again for the enormous bodywork to get this $300 million plan allocated, responded to, filed, and excited about where we're headed. I think, could you, I heard that these about $100,000 on mental health, but so much more comes from these other funds. What is the all-in figure for our mental health investment?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but maybe it was 20?
Even ballpark is okay.
He wants to know what the all-in cost would probably invest in that. We don't know. We'll get back to you.
Again, I think, I'm not advocating that it should be more or less. It was just one place of wanting to sit next to the other investments in art. And even if it's like an 80% right answer.
I couldn't even venture to guess. It's something I think might be mental health, with all eyes, mental health. So we'll have to get together and then send it to you.
Okay. That sounds good. And then I think, I just wanted to, I was on the blue jeans, I think during the meeting on the night. We just wanted to reiterate, I think. My understanding is we're all comfortable moving away from thought exchange because it doesn't give us information of who's responding. So we get these 4,000 responses, but we have no idea if that's 4,000 High Park parents, 4,000 Abigail parents, X, or who knows? You know, and I just think that there are so many other tools out there we could use. But I'd love to see us never again be in a position where, you know, we're not actually sure who we've heard from. And I think we have lots of examples of really great communication we've done. We just wanted to check in person if there's some feeling that we can move in a different direction.
So we heard you and felt that RFP and a full history already?
Awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome. So then the very last thing on this was, I know I've shared this idea with maybe everybody here at this point, but one of the other things I'd love to see us do is like a quarterly survey of parents. I thought it was so powerful. And I'm not asking if we formally adopt this or if we do it on our, you know, some advocacy for this idea. In some of the decisions about whether we bring kids back in person or keep them all last spring, it was so unbelievably helpful. You're like we had a representative lead on what families were... And I think it would be wonderful for us to do that, not just when we have this high stakes one decision to make, but looking ahead a couple of months at a time on what some of the issues within the community. Let's get people's opinion on the front and really know that we've heard from a diverse cross-section. And so I think there's a lot we can do here, and just wanted to... Thank you, Ms. Bolton.
This is a follow-up. Since you're going to be putting the numbers together on mental health costs and the value we place on that, please try to include too the partnerships that we have that provide.
Yep.
And again, there's another opportunity to look at that kind of inventory that we seldom get reported, so that'd be great. Thank you.
Morosky?
I think this is awesome. I appreciate all the work on it. And the first grade reading specialist, as you know, superintendent, hot note's favorite. And now I've hopped up on like kindergarten and preschool reading specialist. And I had a great conversation with one of my old friends, Claire, who works at Greenlight about initiatives that they have. And I think they've approached this already. I just wanted to put it out there that it's really neat initiatives. So I just wanted to drop a little plug for it about then leading men going intentionally to Blackman in 18 to 24. So that's sort of we owe a raise to teach them to be reading specialists or reading tutors, but paid reading tutors. You know, if you're a paid tutor, you do a little better. So anyway, now that we got our first grade, I'm going to go to preschool kindergarten. But I think it's awesome. And what I'm especially proud of that I write about is that I feel like we have invested in things that can either be continued or when they end, they end or not. Very nice. So I just want to...
All right. I would like to add, you know, another exclamation point to what Mr. Lindy said about being able to tie the results. And while we're thinking through this and it's being worked on, and one of the exciting things that I saw from the future planning was under Ms. Boyle's function, that CRM approach to our families. And if we can take the families and tie who's responding, we could almost come like with a parent engagement score and we can measure like what percentage and then we know who's responding and not and all the contacts they've had. So I think if we can tie those things, because I really love the ideas and thoughts around connecting very specifically with families with that CRM tool. So with that, thank you for all the work. To everybody here who went through many sessions and discussions and people throughout our community who gave input. I don't know how other public bodies do this work, but I don't know that it is as out in the open and thorough because I've never seen it anywhere. And I just really want to thank this board, the finance committee, and all of our partners for helping to get us to this point. Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Okay. We are now at the hearing of the public on the agenda, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings. We are convening this video conference call in lieu of our public meeting, but we will allow this opportunity for public comment. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer, consistent with the board bylaws. The board has the ability to delimit the hearing of the public on any single issue and will exercise the right to do so if needed. We respectfully ask employees of the district to direct all questions, concerns, and comments regarding return to work and in-person learning to your building representative, your building leadership, or the district safety hotline. Once your request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon and go interactive. Please provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, and your topic, as well as any contact information if you'd like a question answered. This request is consistent with board protocol and we appreciate your complaints. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personal items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Last but not least, we ask that you be respectful to all those listening in. Thank you.
We only have one speaker this afternoon, and then please others.
Thank you.
Billy, please go ahead.
Didn't accept it yet.
Billy, we need you to accept the invite. Please make your arrangements. Billy?
Anticipating.
There she is. Looks like I see her name up there.
Hello?
There she is.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Thank you. It takes a little while to move over from attendee to presenter. I just would like to know that I'm thankful that I was able to have a hearing of the public this evening. It was difficult to find the log in, but the board office was able to help in with that. I was truly looking forward to having a smooth start to the school year, but the cuts to metro routes, and as they were cut, it has caused a complete disruption in the high schools across the city. Today, high school teachers had their first in-person meeting at their schools, and my phone and our office phones were blowing up. Teachers are not happy, feeling like the district is trying to balance the metro issues on the backs of teachers, and they have not had input on what this is going to look like or how it's going to operate. I would like to request this evening a copy of every school metro plan because those plans keep changing and one problem is now leading to another problem. Some of these issues are actually issues that we need to negotiate and create MOUs so that there is a clear understanding as we move forward about what some of these changes are going to look like. As you know, kids are going to, schools are going to be monitoring students as they enter and leave the building. They're going to be doing so on a rotation. And some of the schools are going to take an hour for their dismissal because they're not allowed to allow all their students to leave the building at the same time. First will be the sports and after-school activities in 7, 8, 9, and then 11 and 12, almost a year late, I mean an hour later. I don't know, after students have been on the bus for an hour to an hour and a half in the morning, then they get to school early and they may have 45 minutes. Then they have their work, their school day, and then they're after school an hour, and then another hour to an hour and a half getting home. That leads to a long day for kids. And I don't know how many of 11th and 12th graders have jobs that they have to get to and are willing to stay after school for an hour. I don't even know if that's something that the district is allowed to do to hold kids longer than what the school day is. I don't, I'm not the attorney on that, but I will be looking into it with some of the state requirements. Will there be, some schools are being told that they're going to have a later start time, they're going to cut into their school day because kids will be riding on the bus with four or three other schools and they'll have more stops. Some of the kids, I've talked to some parents whose kids are going to be riding, and the route that they have, the Google routes and the metro routes don't really match. And I'm not sure which one is which. But parents that told me that they never received any information about the practice passes to use this week with kids. They've gotten all kinds of robo calls and emails about the start of school, but never once did they receive anything about getting a pass so that the kids could go out and actually practice the route. Tomorrow, there will be some students and their parents have said that they would keep me informed of how well the routes are running. I hope that they're running on time. The one family that I've been talking to today, their daughter will be getting on in College Hill, riding through College Hill. One on Route 17, and there are 32 stops that that's going to last for 12 minutes before they hit Clifton and Ludlow. They will then have to get off at Clifton and Martin Luther King, switch to walk down to Burnet Woods, Martin Luther King, to Route 37, pick up 11 more stops. And with this, transfer buses and a total of 43 stops, they say it's only going to take 47 minutes. I don't know if any of you have ever been on buses during peak times, but those routes take longer than one minute per stop. I, we have concerns about this. We have concerns about the teachers having a longer workday. They were told they were going to have to stay after school for an hour and keep kids in their room. And when they said, well, our day is over at such and such a time, and I have tutoring or I have other meetings after school, they were like, if you leave, then the kids will be in there by themselves. I have concerns about that because principals are being told that the kids cannot come together in the auditorium or cafeteria because of COVID. And so there's a lot of issues. And then principals, when you have meetings an hour or two after school, which is making a way longer table for teachers than what their initial times are. And people have family responsibilities and they cannot just on the turn of a dime will pick up and change all of their schedules because they also have families who have to pick kids up. So I don't know how we're going to communicate all of this, but it's really somehow we have to have an emergency meeting and come together and review these plans because it really got, there's a lot of issues. And one problem is triggering another problem.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers. Appreciate your comments. You know, the one thing that if I could add, you know, we're not a small district, that's for sure. So there are thousands and thousands of options as it relates to any decision we make. Every child is going to have, you know, different routing or different schools and all these types of things. I think it's important, and I'll ask our interim superintendent to provide those numbers of where, because there will be these one-offs. And I've had a couple who reached out to me, I know several board members, and I'm happy to say like there was a call directly. They worked it out and then, and they called me and said, wow, I already got the call from Mr. Timbal Oliver or the deputy, or the interim superintendent. So I think part of it is, not that there won't be issues, but it's how are we going to respond and help make sure people have the number to be able to get their concern? And of course, then we've got to live into that commitment. So Ms. Amat, do you have any comments you'd like to add? Maybe you could share those numbers where families can contact with questions.
Yes. First, I would like to say, we would love to talk with Ms. Julie Sellers. This is all new information. We are not asking teachers to stay an extra hour early, as I stated and presented on Monday's meeting. Did take every time for our paraprofessionals and those who signed up for it. And that's what we did during the pandemic as well, at our... But what I would say is, Ms. Timbal Oliver is available and was happy to meet with Ms. Sellers. And the only thing I would ask for is specific, specifics. Because all schools have a plan that we worked out with administration. Communication has went out. But if there's one-offs, we are more than happy to work with those individuals. If it's systemic, we are more than happy to have open dialogue and discussion. But I would request that Ms. Sellers contacts our Timbal Oliver and please have specifics at those meetings so we can work quickly, efficiently, and be responsive to our families.
Great.
So thank you.
I think that's a great solution-focused approach. And one, it'll be important to keep going forward. There's just going to be things we have to work through together. So thank you for that. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I do want to follow up again on the issue of dismissal. Because I asked about that Monday. And the question for me is, and I tried to phrase it so it was the instructional day. Doesn't sound like the instructional day is being listened, but it does sound like the school day is being like... Well, if we're holding students past dismissal, you made the school day longer.
And Ms. Timbal Oliver, that's what I'm saying. We are not hoping kids past dismissal. So that's what I want to make sure we're all in the same...
And I would be so glad to hear that because that is certainly not what is kind of happening among families who are now, families that I know are contacting me and they'll look, you know, if Billy has to stay extra, that he's my childcare, so I can stay at work. I mean, our kids have responsibilities at home where frankly that many suburban kids may not have. So I'm worried about that. So if we're not holding people beyond the school day, I really would like that verified, like, especially what you said on Monday. So how is this phase dismissal or whatever occurring?
So it is different for each school. There are some schools that because of their large number of students and few number of stops, they are phasing the dismissal, dismissing the other students first and making a plan for how to allow those other students to stay. It is a small window of time. It is not an hour, to my knowledge, at any school. It's more like 15, a 15-minute window. And... Um, and um, the schools are making arrangements to, to staff that and have adult supervision based on volunteers um for overtime or additional assignment.
But in, in teachers' classrooms, because we cannot hold the kids in a larger room because of COVID?
For the plans that I'm aware of, it are, they're in a larger space, not in a classroom.
Damn if we do and damn if we don't, aren't we?
Yes.
And this, I still am very concerned because probably I'm going to assume it's wrong based upon what you guys are saying. But I am still hearing the fact that the schools don't, you know, uh, how should I say it? Are worrying, rightfully so, about actually dismissing their high school students at the same time because of the drought situation. So we are changing what we do to facilitate the metro plan working, which I think goes beyond doing things to make the kids safer and mitigating the disaster of the metro plan. And I think it would be, it would be good to hear what each school is doing, but if, if it does vary apparently. Uh, building, building, because I'd be interested to see what uh some high schools might be able to do and other high schools are not able to do. Thank you.
Ms. Sellers?
Yes, just to um again clarify, I guess under clarification, because on the ground, implementation-wise, it does sound uh from people that I've spoken to that um teacher that will be asked to work outside their contract. And I, I, I expressed that that was not presented on one thing, nor was I assuming because it, that would not be appropriate uh without uh any other conversation. But also um, the dismissal, I guess Clark and Withrow and Wallen, are they all getting off at the same time? Do they get out of school the exact same time?
To answer your first question, as far as asking the teachers to work outside of the, the contract, we have not.
Okay.
And, and I just want to make sure, Ms. Temple Oliver, that is correct. Have we asked teachers to work outside of their?
Only on a volunteer basis for additional.
Okay, and so somewhere in the communication must be all mixed up or whatever, but that's, but correctly, that they're going to be in your. Of your roles. Those are conversations that I'm not really in that heart, but that's a concern. But with the, thank you for answering that, clarifying, thank you, Mr. Mel Oliver. For the, the schools that are dismissing at High Park and, and Evanston, are those schools dismissing all at the same time?
Do you have to start, I don't know the starts, but we discuss the times of each high school.
Okay, apparently that was brought up, that that was going to be a concern, but apparently people think that they are. And just that whole group of, with the staggering or without the staggering, I'm not real sure.
So could I, uh, so I think we're talking about a lot of the issues kind of referring to what Ms. Sellers said. This was kind of a hearing of the public. Um, I think it's, it's a very important fact that there had not been a connection between Ms. Sellers and our interim superintendent. So we definitely need to bring that together. Um, and you know, I, I trust that what our administration tells us is what's happening. And you know, I think that we need to make sure that we're connecting then anybody who has questions with our administration. Uh, let them handle those questions. And then I think lastly, I truly trust our principals to navigate through this. Um, they're going to have to flex and adjust to some degree. Um, and you know, at least what I've heard from uh principals that I've encountered through the opening events was, we're good. So fingers crossed um as we go back, but I think it would be great to have that meeting sooner versus later so that communications can get out and we mitigate this world. All right, thank you. Ms. Bates?
Right, and kind of on this thing, like uh as far as collection of data regarding all of this. Uh, I had requested that we keep track of the absences. Uh, you know, and, and I come, and, and what I'm thinking about that, we really need to keep track of the tardies. And consistently, because I know, you know, I know for, for instance, one school has like a ten-minute grace period. I mean, across the board, our high schools don't operate consistently with how they record absence sequences and tardies. But if we can tighten that up and, and require all the principals to keep track of the tardies uh very closely and consistently, I think that will help us, you know, with, with our data and our decision-making down the road.
Thank you.
I'll make it quick, yeah. Since this had come up, just a couple, couple quick points. So I just kind of want to piggyback off Ms. Bowers and Ms. Bolton, just the things I've heard from teachers named after their principals. Um, and again, obviously happy to be told I'm wrong. Um, I've heard from enough people uh that, that I trust that at one school in particular, they're staying as long as fifteen minutes afterward um in classrooms, that principals said this was something that they had to do. And another was that staff meetings had to be an hour before school. If you wanted to come an hour before school to meet, again, coming from the meetings they had with their principals um because of the busing issue, because all hands hated me. So if that, if that is not true, I'd love to hear that. If it is true, I'd love to rectify because again, to go off this whole point is we are bending over backwards for Metro's plan. This is Metro's plan, not ours. And we are, and, and we're asking kids um to bear the run of it and our teachers to bear the run of it. Uh, I would be remiss if a liar couldn't say and upset me. Yeah, I, I find, I just, I, so I need to be told I'm wrong, but it seems, I don't know why people would be saying this. I mean, fifty minutes is a long time for a kid to stay after school in an unsupervised classroom. And then you're not an unsupervised bus, not saying the bus operators won't supervise them, but so that's not true. The teachers were not told to come an hour early, I mean.
That is correct. What I will stress, that it's very difficult to answer questions when it's the first time administration is here. So if Julie Sellers, CFT, um, would love, we would love to collaborate and have discussion. We have met with staff at the schools. Um, if things have come up that we are unaware of, we are more than willing to have discussion and brainstorm. For us, school starts tomorrow and it's very important that we provide a safe, happy return for our kids. And we are more than willing to sit with individuals who are impacted by it and, and, and want the same thing. So that's what I want to leave you with. We are more than willing to work with our teachers, our parents to ensure a safe arrival and dismissal for our kids. This is the first time I'm hearing of this. So um, again, I will have Ms. Temple Oliver contact Ms. Sellers today to get a, a meeting started because we just want to make sure our kids are safe when they come to school.
Okay, so um, you know, and I think a good practice if we hear these, pop it to the, the assistant superintendent, hey, there's a question, this school, you might need to have that principal reassure that this is not happening. And I think the longer we save it to hear, we could just get some of these things sniffed in the bud. Because the questions I've gotten, boom, the answers gone out and it's, it's just been done. So please, if you hear anything over the next twenty-four hours, I mean, the more, you know, it's new, it's changed, everybody's coming back. And you know, maybe they didn't, they weren't at the one meeting, but they were at the other and then somebody said, I heard this. The more we can help getting everybody to the same information, the better. And thank you because I know you're, you're dealing with a lot of these as different board members who've been sharing and you've been triaging. So thank you for that. All right, Ms. Bowers, please present the August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee readings report.
Thank you, Vice President Messer. Uh, I have a report for the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee. We met on August six, uh, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, and the initial conversation was around the assignment given by Board Member Morowski regarding gender-neutral graduation gowns. Uh, and we did, we did process that. And ultimately was in agreement that uh either the principals come up with a, with either a neutral ground with uh, with respect to Ms. Bolton, that represents the school color. Uh, in my opinion, I, I think if you do have two colors, each student should pick whatever color they want. Uh, I don't think it should be specifically for, for gender. So Ms. Murphy expressed that they used, it used to be like that, but it has changed over the years. And she was going to um follow up with um school principals about um whether schools were. There was a recommendation from Mr. Lundy regarding what they were doing across the high schools, across either local or nation. Uh, you can compare that to that to be, were you requesting that high schools go nationally?
Or just in general around our area?
Oh, I just thought there, there could be organizations out there.
Okay, I'll back that up. Very good, thank you. Um, then we had Ms. Ree filing, uh, who presented on College Credit Plus. Um, she gave us a nice report on the number of students who were involved in the bonus of College Credit Plus. She also identified, and that information is, is in the uh quick report. She also identified areas of gap, uh, specifically with our uh black students, our male students and our students of um economically disadvantaged. Uh, and she identified ways to solve that problem. Um, there's a goal of um twenty-six percent degree attainment, we talked a lot about that. She got the fifty percent gap for students wanting to go to college. And the ones actually trying to figure out how to uh close that gap, um, different gaps at different high schools that were offering College Credit Plus. Um, and then of course, uh, the biggest was the participation rate of Black meal and um uh economically disadvantaged students. Ms. Ree filing also um informed the committee about students who participated in dual enrollment and, and how that's been impacted. She updated the students with data uh from the various institution, institutions that they, they've attended. Um, curriculum instruction update from Ms. Wolf, um, physical education, science, health curriculum. Uh, a copy of that science uh curriculum was attached. Ms. Bolton advised the administration to look into international standards, international standards in science as well as Ohio standards. Um, there was also an action for the administrator, state administration, who provided comprehensive upgrade update regarding Ms. Lindy's request uh for a, a green red review or report just presented in December. Ms. Campbell, director of curriculum, reported that she would grade recommendations for in December twenty-one or January twenty-two, seeking adoption for February twenty-two. Um, we, Ms. Erin Morales, uh, from World Languages, gave us an update on the World Language Curriculum Adoption Timeline. Um, Ms. Bolton expressed concerns about equity and how many grade years uh students can continue learning the language. There was a discussion around how schools, how schools were identified to have specific languages at this school and how that was captured. And we got a report uh from this uh, I think it was Ms. Campbell, sent the report via email. Um, but the question still was, what power is determined which school has which, uh, which level of language? I don't think that was included. But we did get a breakdown of where the languages are. And then lastly, um, I informed the committee that we had agreed uh initially of when we elected our interim superintendent, we would do a ninety-day uh assessment. Uh, and so um, I was supposed to send that information to our committee member, Bella Twing Third, that was what I said. I remember. Uh, and uh, of, of course, that the ninety-day review. In addition to some other areas or suggestions that you guys, what have, that should be assessed. And then we would submit that to the board uh in September. Uh, I present the minutes as written.
Okay, do we have any questions? Thank you.
Second.
Pardon?
Need a second?
Yeah, um, so can I get a, sorry, motion to approve the minutes as written? Great, second?
Sorry.
Great, Mike, Mr. Morowski? Good.
Now, boys, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, thank you. All right, uh, Ms. Amat, do you have a report?
Just our written report, um, I would like to submit for your approval.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the report of the superintendent? Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates? Ms. Fulton?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lundy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes. All right, do you have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
移到
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I, I do know in the public record and, and the report we received, there is a, uh, an item, uh, I think it's letter K, maybe. Uh, Roman, it's the, it's the two million dollars for sort of. If you could uh help us so that the public is aware as to what that was about. And, and, and I will remind the public that this, in the time period, we were trying to get the year started, even though we had delayed the, had to delay the budget, because of all of our other plans. Uh, financially, we're trying to get this as a, as a, sorry. Um, but I think that would be helpful if we go through that briefly as to what that was for.
Certainly, so uh, in the interest of um trying to determine what the state budget adoption was going to have an effect on our budget here, so the plan, we delayed adopting a full-year budget in June and adopted a ninety-day temporary budget. So what that means is that all the contracts that we needed to have in place on July one, really processed through the system. So as we were collecting the information to put in the treasurer's report, um, some information was inadvertently left off naming the sort of contract. We'd asked everybody to do only a ninety-day contract instead of a full year. So everybody was in general fund, any contract was in general fund was short, so that we could stay within a ninety-day allotment. Um, I just inadvertently included it when I was going through the approvals and I included that I would have been more to people. So purpose order was issued, fourteen million dollars to get this full year started. Um, and so this is just a correction of that manual error.
Thank you.
And the, the two, two million dollars was for services. And we are under the, under, we're under the understanding that it was related to our paths. I mean, considering or something, those would be the services that would have been rendered.
My understanding of the metro contract is that we purchase passes for our students.
Thank you.
And any questions? Question? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Fulton?
Aye.
Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lundy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morowski?
Yeah. Okay, well, um, before we transition, kind of the last time that we're together before our doors open. So um, this week I got a front row seat to watch uh all the magic unfold here at uh the Ed Center as it was piped in throughout the district. And uh, I want to say a huge kudos to Deputy Superintendent Amat, Krista Boyle and the entire team who put those programs together. Um, it was just, like, just the excitement at all the building sites, they were cheering and signs and it just was a really good feeling um to be at this point. So uh, thank you for that. And then today with all of our community partners, uh, partners that I learned for the first time about, great. Um, uh, loved hearing that story specifically about the Girl Scouts and how there was a, a young lady in our district that was non-verbal for many years. And it was the Girl Scouts that brought her uh to where she is today. And it's just the power of those partners and all these extra programs that allow us to connect in um completely different ways and unique ways each child needs. So thank you for all your work. And uh, on behalf of Lillian and all the other ones that are going to be going to sleep with lots of anticipation, thank you for all your work in making um tomorrow possible and here's to a great school year. Woo! Okay, at this point, um. Oh, sorry.
Are we, um, do we have the sign, is it being?
I don't have it on here.
Regular business.
Is it, is it regular?
No, it's a special schedule.
All right, next one.
Um, okay, at this time I need a motion to recess into executive session to consider employment of a public employer official, preparations for conducting or reviewing negotiations for bargaining sessions with public employees concerning compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Okay.
Aye.
Now you have a second, thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Fulton?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lundy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Yep.
Okay.